Good evening, everyone. And welcome to our December 5 regular monthly meeting of the School Board for the City of Danville. I call the meeting to order and I will ask that the roll be called.
Ms. Bryant. Dr. Campbell.
President.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Hughes.
Here.
Reverend Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Bolton.
Here.
Dr. Paul Hamus.
Here. You have before you an agenda for tonight's meeting. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, may we approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Hall, second from Ms. Hughes to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, then you may call the roll.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Reverend Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Bolton.
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus.
Yes. We now move to the public hearing on the lease of the Taylor Elementary School property. That is an attachment in the board documents and it will be an action item later this evening. So, right now, this is the opportunity for anyone in our live audience here to make any comments they might choose for or against the lease of the Taylor Elementary School to the Carlisle School. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Please come right ahead.
Very gratefully, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Eric Monday, the treasurer for the Board of Trustees at Carlisle School. Regardless of what you ultimately decide to do this evening, we just want to sincerely thank you for considering Carlisle's request. We're very excited about the possibility of being able to lease Taylor School. It has a very long storied history in the City of Danville. We honor that and we look forward to hopefully being able to continue Taylor service in the educational field. I also, if it is your pleasure to lease this to us, one thing that we do want the Danville community to know is that it is our intention to install a barricade wall in Taylor School, which would make a point of describing its role in the history of Danville. And we also wish it to continue to be an open and accessible part of the entire Danville community. So, if it is your pleasure to do this, we certainly look forward to working with the Danville School Board and we would be enormously grateful if you would approve this lease. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing on the lease of the Taylor School property? Seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing. We now move to another public hearing. This one is on proposed policy revisions. First off is Policy 42-10.10 on staff leaves and absences and the associated policy on sick leave bank. Both of those are being impacted by the new hybrid retirement plan. Some of the implications of the hybrid retirement plan required some tweaking of our existing policies only for those individuals who will be on that hybrid plan. And then also during this public hearing, we're looking at Policy 33-40 and its regulation, 33-40, on locally awarded verified credits, which brings our policy up to date with the State Board of Education on their latest approval of some additional options for local verified credits. I'm speaking to this because our policy committee chair called this afternoon and has a very limited voice, so she asked if I would mind kicking that off instead of her doing it as would normally occur. So, I open the public hearing on the policy revisions. Anyone who would like to speak to any of those policy changes? Seeing none, then we will close that public hearing as well. And as promised to the chairman of the transition team, we have managed to get to them within the first five minutes of our meeting. We are glad to welcome back here in our presence two members of the transition team who have been working diligently over the past several months to come up with a report to the superintendent and to this board. The chairman of the transition team, Dr. Lyle Evans. Many of us here in Danville know him well. And likewise, well-known locally, our own city manager, Mr. Joe King, was a member of the transition team. So, at this point, gentlemen, if you would like to come up to the table, we eagerly await your report.
Dr. Paul Hamus, members of the board, good to come before you again to talk a little bit about some of the work that's taken place as a part of the transition teams and some of the proposals that are coming forward to you this evening. And I wish that there could have been more of our members here tonight. Unfortunately, it is a Thursday night and most of them are working. But anyway, it's really good to be back in Danville and to be a part of the time that we put into this. It just brings back so many positive memories for me. But I think it's important for us to start off with the purpose that this committee was put together, the recommendation of Dr. Newsom. First of all, we're here to take a look at what Danville Public Schools is presently doing, how it does its work, but not to evaluate the school system. Our purpose was to look at, review, examine other school districts, talk to the stakeholders, teachers, parents, administrators, and get some ideas about some ways that we could make some recommended changes, primarily in four specific areas: operations, finance, 21st Century Learning, cultural communication, public engagement, governance, and organization structure. We introduced our members of this particular committee to you once before, but I think it would be good to hear their names. Dr. Yvonne Brandon, former superintendent of Richmond Public School, now professor at Virginia Commonwealth University. Dr. Tiffany Franks, who really wanted to be here this evening. She is really involved with some student activities tonight, so she couldn't, but she really wanted to be here and wanted me to make sure I made that point. President of ABR, Ms. Camille Jones, chief operating officer of Howard County Public Schools, and she was the one that really dealt more in the finance and the technology portion of our work. Dr. Lorraine Lane, superintendent of Roanoke County Public Schools. Dr. Lane was very instrumental in our comparison studies with other school districts, in particularly in the area of instructional leadership. You're gonna have to help me, Dr. Newsom. Yakovu Osmanu.
Osmanu.
Okay. Chief Accountability Officer, Baltimore County Public Schools. We really looked at the accountability and assessment of the issues that we had before us, but you know, one of the things that really stands out is the fact that our superintendent and board has a feeling of transparency in the school district and wanting its own city manager to serve on the transition team. It's a very, very powerful thing for us and I'm really proud that Mr. Joe King is with us today and he was very instrumental in many of our recommendations. So, what did we do? A lot of stuff. And one of the reasons we were able to spend a lot of our time over the phone, conversations, both here in Chesterfield with a number of employees, but also phone conferences, was because of the number-one leader of the transition team, and that was Lisa Powell back here. And I wish that she would please stand and we recognize her. Right down to the PowerPoint that you're looking at, the document that you received earlier, Lisa has been so instrumental in keeping us on task in many ways and keeping us organized, so I really want to thank her for her hard work and what she's done for us. So, I just mentioned the committees. You know, I talk about the interviews with the Danville Public School staff and the data that we're involved in, but you all were so instrumental yourselves as the leadership of the school district, the board members, and you already put in the initial part of our work was instrumental in guiding us in the direction that we go. But obviously, the hours and hours of time with your staff members, assistant superintendents, directors, principals, they gave up a lot of time to help us to pull together our recommendations and a lot of review of the data that they pulled together. External stakeholders, Mr. King and Dr. Franks were probably more tied to that specific area because they were here locally. We did do a lot of work in looking what other school districts look like, looking at what programs they had in place that might be similar or comparable to Danville Public Schools. And so, a lot of time was spent on the phone with other folks, other school districts, looking at organization structures and so forth. And of course, we were guided by what matters most in Danville Public Schools, that all students are successful in triculate in a learning environment that enables every high school's graduate to succeed in college work in life. So, you gave us clear direction. Dr. Newsom provided the marching orders and we just kind of fell in line there behind Lisa Powell. So, what you see is what we've done. You know, Phillip, this looks like Taylor Elementary School when we were students. And public education has gone along with Ms. Burns' class. Public schools have come a long ways, but, and what we saw here in Danville, we certainly have come a long ways. But as we moved to a more 21st century classrooms and making sure that kids get the best preparation they can for the work environment in college, we've got to move to a little bit more of this angle where we have blended learning environment in which our teachers are interacting with students, students are interacting with technology, and the classroom is virtually can be flipped where students are actually learning as much at home as they are at school. Where teachers become more of the guiding person as opposed to the direct standard for the classroom instructor. So, what you see here is what we kind of dreamed that Danville would look like. And you're headed in this direction, there are a lot of signs to that, so this is kind of where we would like to see Danville go. So, when we get into the specific areas, 21st century teaching and learning, while Dr. Lane and Mr. Osmanu were headed up, heading up this particular section in terms of the recommendation, it's really important for you also realize that we were all together when we talked to the staff members and listened to the different components and we all kind of fed into what the recommendations are, even though two people might be looking at a specific area and the specific write-ups for those areas. So, let's talk about 21st century learning and what Dr. Lane and Dr. Osmanu would share with you tonight. First of all, the curriculum guides in every school district need to be revised regularly. And not only should they be revised to take a look at the different gaps that might maybe in place in regard to what we are currently teaching and where we want students to go toward 21st century skills, but they also need to be available to parents, they need to be available to students, they should be available to the public as a whole so that we know that they all, we all as a community, know what we're trying to do and can support that effort. So, we would really like those, one of our key recommendations is that our curriculum guides are updated annually on a regular basis, but also make them available online to the community at large. The CTE programs are very, very good. We think that they should be reviewed however, and a lot of opportunities are there to look at other school districts that have CTE programs that offer the same kinds of things. And in some cases, they may offer it a little differently, or they may have additional programs that you could be taking advantage of. And we felt like some visits to some good sites might, some specific school districts that you could expand on would be very, very beneficial. Development of a five-year district-wide academic performance matrix that targets and measures student achievement toward those 21st century skills. You know, what are the targets, what are the measures? They need to be identified, and then there must be some kind of way to measure that over time. Key measures, a lot of districts, we would call them key measures, but they really need to be developed. And we're gonna talk about the strategic plan in which that might actually take place in just a few minutes. Looking at more credit recovery types of programs. Now, the one that most people are aware of obviously is the credit recovery program, but there are those out there also that can help us to increase the graduation rate. Expanding dual enrollment. This is a huge issue across Virginia, if not the nation, but dual enrollment programs really feed into our community college system expertise, the four-year college expertise, but it takes a little effort to make it happen because it requires teachers in Danville Public Schools to become dual credit certified in order to be able to teach the courses. We face the same challenge in my current school district. It's not easy to do, but the thing that you have to focus on, am I skipping something The thing that you have to do is to allow the tuition reimbursement credit for teachers to get that endorsement. And I think we get to that a little bit more as we get into the recommendations. Danville, like Chesterfield, Richmond, Henrico, now all the districts that I've worked in, is changing. It's constantly changing. The one thing that I think we are weakest in in public education is we don't prepare our teachers to deal with the changing demographics that are occurring in the classrooms. Cultural competency is a huge issue for all districts in Virginia, and I know that you're seeing the changes in your student population as well. And I want to point out one aspect of that that we noticed in Chesterfield County. We do a lot of cultural competence training, but to, just to give you an example of how big this issue can be. We were trying to deal with the issue of dealing with Asian population because we have a growing Asian population. And we had a generic kind of training activity that we did to try to cater to what we thought their needs were. We had an expert come in last, two weeks ago, from the Asian Chamber of Commerce to give us some tips on dealing with the Asian population, the parents and the students. But what we found out was there were seven different Asian populations. And not only were there seven different ones, but there are certain ones where you cannot put the same kids in the same class because their cultures are so different. Everything from Vietnamese to Cambodian. You can understand the differences there. But it's not only in those particular groups, it's across the board when you look at cultural competence. And trying to make sure that teachers have an opportunity to gain insight on the background and relationships that these kids have with their families is the way you really get to have them to understand what you're trying to teach and open them up to you. So, that's a big, big piece for us. This is what I was referring to earlier. In order for your teachers to become certified for dual, to teach dual enrollment courses, they have to, first of all, at secondary level, they have to have a content area degree. For example, they have to have a degree in math, English, some world language, social sciences, any of the sciences. First of all, they have to have that degree. The second thing is they have to have 18 hours beyond that degree to become duly certified. Now, if you're like us, it's just a benefit to us for the teachers to take that on so they don't actually get raises for it. So, there may be some incremental amount they get for hours beyond their masters, but it's very minimal. So, we recommend that as you seek opportunities for teachers to gain dual enrollment, that you also finance it, find ways to finance it under tough times, to assist the teachers to get the tuition assistance needed for that. I think we all recognize Dr. Franks. She dealt with the issues of cultural communication, public engagement, and I think you're probably gonna hear some things that she's already resonated through her work at the community college. Just some of the key recommendations. Making parents a priority in supporting and communication in the following ways. Having a system-wide PTA liaison. I'm not saying it necessarily has to be a paid position, but a position where a person is kind of working with all of the PTAs from a central function. And in this way, they would actually meet with the PTA presidents of the various schools and kind of coordinate efforts to support schools so that there's some district-wide PTA roles that could work directly with the board and the superintendent. Establishing a Danville City PTA Council in itself, in which you have a representative sample of PTA members, two to three people per school perhaps, to work with the PTA liaison, the superintendent, and your director of public relations would be a key component to this as well. You have a new director of communications. I congratulate you on that move, particularly I congratulate Dr. Newsom. I know that's a big piece for him to have in place. But that particular role in working with parents is very, very instrumental, and we saw several districts that are using the position, including my current school system, in a number of ways. But creating a systemic template of communication through that department that can be used in all schools so that the communication is consistent across the board is a key communication initiative that we would recommend. Change what we see, read, hear about Danville Public Schools. Thank goodness again that you have this person in place. A major public relation branding of the Danville Public School, about its success stories, not only current success stories, but previous success stories over the years, need to be out front. And you know, in this world of SOL scores, they typically is what we didn't do well with a good public relations department with the superintendent, highlighting the things that we did do well in those SOL scores. If we came up two points, that's a success over where we were the previous year, but really highlighting the positive things that are happening. Taking better advantage of chalk talk, it used to be called chalk talk live when I was here, but really taking advantage of those where we tell the positive stories of things that are really happening that we heard for ourselves that are really happening, but maybe people really don't know, you know? So, that would be a major piece of what we would recommend. Taking a look at the websites and making sure the school websites are up to snuff. They really are reflecting accurate information, and also the central school district website. As a human resource person for several years now, we've realized that the first impression of new employees that are candidates for employment in Danville Public Schools, businesses that are coming or considering Danville Public Schools, the first impression that they get is they go right to that website. And they also go directly to the school websites in the areas that kids may go. And if the information is not accurate, then obviously, you know, a lot of work would be, it may not come across as positive as we want. So, making sure that we have a consistent template, I think we have the template, but making sure that information is up to date and somebody being responsible monitoring that. And I think that there are a variety of ways with new positions you have in public relations that that could happen. Looking at your own, the bigger website as well, and showcasing the good things that students are doing, the many good things that students and teachers are doing, would really help in your recruitment efforts as well as with dealing with businesses and other organizations that may be considering coming to Chesterfield. I mean, excuse me.
Come on back.
It was earlier today, so forgive me. But telling the Danville Public Schools story is really essential in what you do with the Again, really taking advantage of the chalk talk program to tell the story, any other community channels that we can take advantage of and use it as a key resources for other things, other services that may be being provided that the public doesn't hear enough about, like your tutorial programs, and I'm sure there are others that can be highlighted. What does it mean to be educated, an educated person? You know, as your population change, Dr. Newsom's out front with the charge, talking about the importance, it's really important for Mr. King and city council and school board to be out in front of the public effort as well and those coordinated efforts. We can't stop now that Dr. Newsom's here. He's still gotta be out front, he's gotta push. And that was really evident in our conversations with members of the community as well as the staff. How do you identify success? Do we have benchmarks? What do we mean when we say we want success at George Washington High School? Really clearly defining what that means. Developing a comprehensive marketing and communication plan for both internal and external communications. You've got the person in place, the strategies I'm sure are being developed as we speak in that particular meeting. Developing a vehicle for regular effective internal communication. We know that's happening already with superintendent having a much larger director, I'm not sure whether you call it director cabinet or whatever it is, your larger, your group is larger than it used to be. That certainly is gonna promote a lot better communication throughout the system. And it was real evident in our interviews of staff members here that that is improving. It's come a long ways from where it perhaps had been, and so that's gonna happen even better as we look at project management oversight and so forth. Really engaging the community is so vital, you know, to get the financial support, to get the buy-in. We really think that a public engagement committee is necessary. And where you would have the director of communications, the superintendent, others, the ministerial alliance representative is perhaps hired in to develop strategy for increasing community engagement. That's gonna be critical as Danville goes forward and as the community itself changes. We talked about, a little bit about this, having the director of communications work directly with city, county, higher ed, and other key communication leaders, community leaders to develop a united front. And having our city manager right on point with everybody. So, if you have, everybody has a template of key talking points about Danville Public Schools, the good things that are happening in Danville Public Schools, including city council members. And so, when we go forward in the public, we can talk about the good things that are happening in the school system, and it's on a consistent basis. We know that Dr. Newsom is the cheerleader, and I've already talked about this, but you know, having the director of community with public engagement is a primary responsibility to deal with the public, but it does not take the responsibility away from the superintendent. He has to continue to be out front pushing the district and encouraging the public and advising the board on the direction that it should go. Identifying the best practices in terms of communities and schools and how they should come together for cultural initiatives. Dr. Franks gave a specific example, initiatives such as the Strive Model, Say Yes, offering insights into what we may wanna look at in the future. This is so important. Training the school staff on the importance of creating a service-oriented welcoming atmosphere. You know, when that parent comes in and they're upset at the school, the first people they see is that front office staff. And making sure that they have some specific guidelines that you would require, the superintendent would require in terms of welcoming, greeting, so that there is a positive atmosphere that they are introducing parents and community members to. Inviting the community organizations and others to be a part of the school system. And creating a environment that instills confidence, pride in one school and respect. You know, we say this a lot, but it's true, you know, the perceptions are the reality of the people that have those perceptions. Websites, a good welcoming, front office staff, clean buildings are essential. And while we know we have that, it's always an effortful continuous improvement at all of our schools, and I will say it all of our school districts as well. So, to give myself a break, Mr. King, who was instrumental in many of the financial stewardship committee work, I'm gonna turn it over to him and he can share their recommendations.
Before I go into that, I just wanna comment on behalf of the six other members, how much we appreciate- how much we appreciate Lyle Evans' leadership. Everybody worked hard, but Lyle worked doubly hard as the chair of the transition committee. And I just want to say it was a pleasure to serve and be surrounded with by professional educators. That was a real treat. And also, all the people we talked to, and I don't think we've given metrics on that, there was an amazing number of people for hours on end. We heard with every interview, whether it was faculty, teachers, PTA members, a huge degree of commitment to the school system and to the kids. So I think we've got great suggestions for improvement, but don't worry about the level of dedication and motivation in the system, I think is quite impressive. We were looking on the internal financial budget and that sort of thing, and one of the things that I contributed, so I'll say my fingerprints on this one, is the importance of the school board and the city council to work together through the budget process, understanding that the final budget numbers are a long way from the original tentative budget numbers, but the city council needs, are really understanding the roles and responsibilities and staying on the appropriate side of the responsibilities for running the school system. The city council really needs to know as thoroughly as possible what you're dealing with and what your ambitions are for the students in the future. So it's quite important, and we've made progress over the last couple of years, and it's not just a budget that's delivered with very little time to understand it in April. It really needs to be an ongoing discussion starting early. We're a little behind in what was proposed because the transition team was recommending starting in October, November. We feel strongly, and I doubly, so that Ed and I should get together, and whoever the superintendent is and city manager in the future, and see if there aren't some functions that could be done more effectively together. If you've read the full reports, you see there are a number of things. Sometimes we either don't know these things or don't refresh our memory about them, but there are some marvelous examples of good cooperation. The bus maintenance operation is a very good one, where we share a bus facility, your employees and the city employees work together in the same building, very good working relationship. And I don't think we've ever calculated the savings to both entities that that allows, but we both do building maintenance, we both do ground maintenance, we both buy materials, we both have IT systems, and after years in this business, I'm not suggesting that any of that necessarily be consolidated, but it could be coordinated to benefit both the school system and the city, and perhaps save money as well as make them more efficient and effective. So the idea is that the city manager and superintendent should get together and form a task force that methodically goes through all these different functions to see if there's some way that you can achieve the kind of benefits we're getting in the bus maintenance There's a recommendation that you establish a curriculum management system, that's been touched on on a slightly different perspective, that can be linked to standards, that you use student-safe email service. A lot of progress has been made in the IT operations of the schools, but there's still a good ways to go. And E-rate funding is available beyond what the Dammel Public Schools has benefited from to date, and so E-rate funding can enhance a lot of the technology capabilities. And the recommendation is to give students access to email with proper safeguards. At one time, the school system had an E-rate consultant and then took that function in-house. Unbalance, the transition team thinks it's really best to hire a very big consultant that you're confident with to maximize and ever regard your access to E-rate funds. The, I'm going to have to ask Lyle's help on the DPS BOE. It took me a few meetings before I could get halfway comfortable with all the acronyms around that.
You know, I want to say Board of Education.
Yeah, well, that's easy, I should have said that. The Board of Education should consider a policy to allow wireless guest access. In this room, for example, people in the audience can't access wireless, and there are simple ways to safeguard the school system. We were asked about that, and it was stated, we're sorry, it's against our policy, so the transition team could not access email in all the meetings that they were in. The school system should purchase a data warehouse to keep track of longitudinal data, and by the way, servers, computer servers is a great example of an opportunity for city-county cooperation. The servers can be here or in the city's operation and save funds there. So with that brief opportunity on stage, I'll hand it back to Lyle.
Thanks, and I wanted to say again that everybody, the entire committee, heard, all the committee, all of the people that were interviewed at the same time, and so input from the groups is not just exclusive to the people. I'm saying that because my mode is up there right now. But in the area of dealing primarily with governance and organizational structure, this came primarily from Dr. Brandon's thinking, is that try to have a better communication, a web of communication between stakeholders, have recommended that superintendent develop an educational action team consisting of a couple of board members, city council members, of course, the city manager, some of the community organizations, parents, and they would, this action team would meet with the superintendent periodically to provide a form of information sharing and the dialogue about what's happening and their perceptions and the perceptions of others in Dammel Public Schools. Develop a new strategic plan to lead the district toward the 21st century learning, and that meets all the requirements for our Department of Education. You know, a lot of districts have a district-wide required state plan, but what we're talking about is one that is really systemic, one that is developed by the community at large under the guidance of the school system, where you have a lot of stakeholders that are really taking the charge from the school board of some basic goals, and they help to develop strategies going forward. That plan is usually updated every two years, and you would bring together other members of the community or subgroups that will come back and take a look at what was done over that past two or three-year period of time, and say what we need to go next as a result of that. So you have some major milestones that you take a look at every two years, and then you have another major revision over a six-year period of time. But we thought that was really important. You have school improvement plans that are very strong in your schools. There wasn't as much of a clear connection between those school improvement plans, and what we would say is a real systemic strategic district-wide plan. So that's something that we think is very important. So what we envision is that the superintendent and the board has a strategic plan, and within that, you have basic goals within the school district. Every school then would write its own goals to meet your strategic plan. And it depends on where that school is, they would have specific strategies that would be quite different from the other schools, depending on what their needs are. And then every teacher within that school has a professional growth plan that has specific goals that are tied to the school improvement plans. In other words, every employee now has a direct connect with your goals. So that's what we were envisioning, and you have some evidence of that. We're saying that it probably, there needs to be a little more transparency in the development of it, and a better understanding of the commitment of all employees to those specific Look at simplistic tools to provide a snapshot, shot of progress of the district. Again, how do you know whether the improvement plans are meeting its goals? What are the major key milestones? And one way of dealing with that, and this was a recommendation that we felt very strong about, is having a balanced school card of some sort to kind of take a look at where you are, and where are you within your K-12 environment, that would also give you your milestones, measurements with other school districts in Virginia. You know, you'll see this recommendation on a number of our areas, but taking a look at the Virginia Association of School Supervisors, VAS, and have them to take a look at your federal program. I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with your federal program, you're certainly doing a great job with it, but there always can be feedback that will tweak those areas and perhaps provide recommendations in how to better utilize those programs in conjunction with instruction, primarily in the area of instruction. And that's a service that VAS will do for you for your charge. Five Delta Kappa does a curriculum management audit. They will take a look at your curriculum, they would, not only would they look at your curriculum, they would look at all the instructional processes of your central office that served to develop the curriculum, they'll take a look at your HR services, your central services, and provide you some specific recommendations. As a matter of fact, seven years ago, my school district went through this, very same process, and many of the recommendations are in place now, and several of them are not. You know, it didn't necessarily serve, the superintendent and the board didn't always agree with it. But having somebody from the outside come in and look at this over a period of time is probably going to give you a lot more in-depth response to what you're doing than a transition team could possibly do. They typically will bring their experts from all over the country in each of your key areas, take a look at what you do and make recommendations based on what other districts across the country are doing. Partner with VAS or Five Delta Kappa to audit job descriptions and actual responsibilities to improve efficiencies. This is key in all of your primary areas. I would say human resources, budget, finance areas, just give them, another group to look at what people are doing and provide feedback on how they could do it even more efficiently. As the numbers of students and teachers change, the central services probably need to better change to reflect those specific needs. And again, Five Delta Kappa or VAS can do that, if you use VAS, because our superintendent is a member, you can probably get it free of charge or a very low charge. You have a professional development plan, and it's a good plan. We think that the professional development plan probably needs to be more comprehensive. It should be driven primarily from teacher needs. How are the instructional needs changing, cultural competency issues that the teachers may be faced with, what kind of adjustments do we need to make? And how can we better support the school improvement plans, you know, from George Washington High School to the elementary schools? What specifically can we do to individualize the training in those specific schools that might not necessarily be the same offer a bunch of courses to people kind of approach, like many of us do? But also, offer the courses, but also tied to the specific needs of specific schools and the teachers in those schools. You know, I would give you an example of the reason that we felt strongly about a comprehensive succession plan. This time last year, I think we were anticipating filling in Chesterfield County two principals that were retiring. Before it was all done, we filled 20 administrative vacancies, maybe 22 administrative vacancies, that we had no clue were going to have. And it was due to a lot of things, some of them were retirement, but it was due to people being promoted, going, you know, we have a community that moves about quite a bit, people just move it all over the place. So you never know when you might have to have people ready to go on the spot. We certainly did, we were hiring principals in August last year because people were getting promoted. It's real important that Dammel has a good comprehensive succession plan to fill the next slot that's available. And I'm not talking about just some courses, these are opportunities for people to go through activities in which they will be faced in real-life scenario what the next job might look like, to get them ready to move forward. We've got a lot of work to do in my district because we promoted so many recently, the bench doesn't look too good. I'm not sure about the bench that you have here, but I can promise you that you need to get people ready for the next step. And, you know, having a comprehensive succession plan attached to your school improvement, professional development opportunities is really critical, and there are a number of good models out there to take a look at. Annual professional development activities with school administrators in the area of human resources, that is happening. What we are recommending, though, is that the day-to-day operations of hiring teachers to fill positions in schools, and also to deal with teachers who may not be performing to expectations, really falls more on the building-level administrator than it ever has, because each of your schools is so different. You can't rely just on your human resources department, but you have to have principals that are engaged. For example, if a particular elementary school is having problems getting a specific kind of teacher to meet their challenges, you know, your central office is not the selling point, it's that principal in that building that's got to sell the program. They've got to be the ones that touch the candidates. And so the more you can do that, and the more you can involve them in training to do that, and also to deal with teachers who are having problems beating certain kids, better off you're going to be. So that's a strong recommendation in regards to professional development. We did have some specific recommendations, and both of our recommendations don't cost a lot of money, they are something to do. There are some efficiencies that can be gained by looking at the current structures and reorganizing some things to create some positions. And in the more detailed report that you received, I think you probably got an organization chart that shows some of the changes, but in a snapshot, you obviously need a director of elementary education to kind of guide what's happening in that specific area. The way things are set up now, the research and evaluation, testing environment falls under a person who's also responsible for instruction, needs to be separated and apart, and one of the recommendations from the committee is that that person not report directly to instruction, because they are evaluating instruction. And so we talked about a different organization structure to be shared in the charts that you've seen. Director of secondary education, dealing with middle and high schools, because of the numbers of schools that you have. Creation of, and this is, Dr. Lane and Dr. Brandon were really heavy on this, making sure you've got teachers that are supported by specialists who know the craft of teaching language arts, math, and social studies, not just because they're SOL areas, but it's essential to the success of the school district, and improving that graduation rate. So people who can get in there, take a look at the curriculum, help to develop the curriculum, and get in there with the teachers and model good instruction is important. Right now, you've got higher-level positions that are doing that work, but it's also preventing them from doing some other things that would be helpful. So, quote, "We have his smart schools, our children deserve a high quality education, let's lead the way." We, the entire committee, at a whim, at the request that the superintendent would be more than happy to come back down at any point in time that the superintendent would ask, so that we could follow up on any of the suggestions, provide any other input. It was a privilege and a pleasure for us to do the work, and this is really what it's all about. You know, and the bottom line is all of our kids getting everything they need to be productive citizens, go on to further their education, or go into the job market. So with that, thanks again for the opportunity. I want to, again, especially thank Lisa Powell, my colleague, here with Mr. Joe King, and all of the members of the transition team, and the superintendent and his staff for their input. But basically, that's it in a nutshell. There's a lot more detail that you have in the reports that you can see, and we have to entertain any questions you might have. to entertain any questions you might have.
Well, Dr. Evans, we certainly appreciate hearing from you and from Mr. King. This has been an exceptionally well-prepared document that gives us a multitude of areas that we need to explore, and we absolutely appreciate the offer that the transition team would be willing to get back together and help us along the way from time to time. That would be superb. I'm going to start relative to our responses or any questions with the superintendent because this was his idea to pull together a transition team, and although you say you're reporting to the board, I know in many respects it's going to fall to him to provide the local leadership in these directions. So, we'll begin this evening with his questions or responses.
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Evans and all of the members of the transition team for the outstanding work that you did, the dedication and the commitment to all of our staff, to our city, to our school district, and especially our students. Because in the end and in the beginning, this is really all about what's in the best interest of our students. And so, with that said, I'd like the public to see this as a part of a strategy. And when we make decisions at the school level, when we look at making decisions about school improvement, we think about multiple sources of data. It's not just one piece of information or one piece of data that you use to inform all of your decisions, but you need to have different perspectives and different kinds of data to inform your decisions. As my work has been moving forward in the school district, I have many sources of data: listening, learning, conversations with the community, with parents, conversations with students, conversations with staff, in addition to my 100 days, first 100 days. And so, that's been a piece of it. And a critical piece of information as we move forward is the work of the transition team. And so, what we will do is, the plan is, to use all of those sources of data and with a extended group of stakeholders: internal staff, the community, and possibly a couple of students, to be a part of our thinking as we develop the next document, which will be the Blueprint for Excellence. And so, my goal is that sometime in early spring, the Blueprint for Excellence will be complete, and it will be a roadmap that we can use in the district to make sure that all of our students graduate from high school and are ready to meet opportunities and to have opportunities to be successful in the 21st century. And so, on behalf of the staff, I'd like to thank you and let everybody know that all of these recommendations probably won't happen in a day. So, it's going to take a little while, and so, what we will be doing collectively with my staff and other stakeholders with consultation with the board is begin to prioritize what we need to do and what we can do in the near future. But certainly, we believe that all of the recommendations that you've made will point us in the right direction and, in the end, as I said, be in the best interest of students. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Members of the board, are there questions, comments, responses from any of you?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful job.
Well, as has been stated by many of us, we certainly appreciate all the time and the effort and the firm commitment that each member of the transition team made to coming up with a valuable set of ideas that can guide us well into the future. And I also want to echo the thanks that have been offered to the staff of Danville Public Schools who devoted considerable amounts of time to providing information, background kinds of things for the work of the transition team. And we look forward then to going that next step, as has been suggested, to form a group that would involve key members from Mr. King's office and city council, along with members from this board and the superintendent, along with community members and students and key individuals to help kind of guide all of this in the right direction. I would trust that this will be a large part of the agenda for the board retreat that's being planned now for the month of January. I had a hunch that might be tied up with it. So, last call for any questions before we let these gentlemen move on to their other responsibilities. Ms. Bryant, you look like you'd like to say something. Do you want to write it out and someone else read it?
I'll have to take care of that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recess for seven minutes.
We have a motion to recess for seven minutes to allow Dr. Evans and Mr. King to accept our personal thanks and move the table out of the way, and we will then resume our public meeting. Seven minutes, well, we've got to vote, don't we? Okay, any discussion of it?
Just second.
Now, we can vote.
Okay. Ms. Bryant?
Did anyone second it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes. Now, we may greet them. I will call us back to order if you will, please, and we shall resume our meeting. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the November 7th regular meeting and from the November 18th combination of work session and discipline meeting. So, that is an action item. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Bolton, second from Reverend Wilson, to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Bryant? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is down, item nine, reminder of dates. The December 2013 public notice is there for anyone who wants to check upcoming dates this month. And then, there's also a reminder on 9.2 about the schedule changes that we have approved for our January meetings because of the start date for school in January. We are moving our regular monthly meeting to January 9th, still on a Thursday, and the discipline meeting moves to the 23rd with the work session on the 24th. We now are ready to move to the consent items. The only items under consent this evening are the recommendations from the Discipline Hearing and Review Board. I've not heard any requests yet for pulling any of those, but this would be a perfectly acceptable time to pull as needed. Any requests to pull items from that? Then, I think we could have a motion to approve the consent items.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent items.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Ms. Hall with a second from Dr. Campbell to approve those consent items. Any discussion? And please call the roll.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes. Now, turn to the personnel recommendations from Dr. Jennings.
Thank you, Dr. Paul Hamus, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Department of Human Resources has prepared and presented for your review and hopefully your approval 11 personnel recommendations for this evening. There is one that I will highlight, and that is the case ending in zero three. As you know, we do not typically ask you to release a teacher from contract during the school term. This young lady's husband has had his job relocate them deeper into North Carolina than will allow for decent daily commute, and for that reason, she's asked to be released from contract when we end for semester. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond. Otherwise, we would ask your approval.
And there's no update this evening, just the original 11?
That's correct.
Very good. Are there questions for Dr. Jennings? All right, this is an action item. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve personnel recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Bolton with a second from Dr. Campbell to approve these personnel recommendations. Then, we will vote. Please call the roll.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Jennings. We now turn to Dr. Osborne for the item on the lease of the IW Taylor site by Carlyle
After several months of negotiation and great work and support from our city attorney and his staff, we have a lease tonight to present to you for your consideration and approval for the lease of the former building occupied, the building formerly occupied by IW Taylor Elementary School by the Carlyle School. This lease would start April 1, 2014, and run for three consecutive years. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dr. Osborne about the lease document? Just clarity, the three years that you refer to actually encompass three complete school years.
That is correct.
To make sure that they are not disrupted during an academic year.
Yes.
And in the language for renewal of the lease, do I recall correctly that there's also language there that essentially allows them to finish a school year once it has begun?
That is correct.
All right. And?
A question.
Yes, sir.
Is that for all of I W Taylor School or portions?
It's for all of Taylor School.
All right, and the language does indicate that Carlyle School will pay the utilities?
That's correct.
Are there other questions or comments?
Just to thank you for clarifying for me my questions today. I appreciate that, Dr. Osborne.
Miss, thank you.
All right, this is an action item. You ready to make a motion?
Who that we approve? Second.
We have a motion from Dr. Campbell, second from Reverend Wilson, to approve the lease for the former IW Taylor Elementary School property to Carlyle School beginning April 1, 2014. Any discussion? Then, let's call the roll, please.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Osborne.
Chairman, just very briefly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We're very grateful, and I was quite rude earlier. I didn't thank Dr. Osborne. He's a very effective negotiator. I don't think I would have enjoyed playing poker. But I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. We look forward to working with you for the good of the children. All right, then, let's see what comes up next here. All right, we now come to the proposed policy revisions. This is the second reading on Section 6000, the Fiscal Management section, that the Policy Committee worked on this fall, according to our regular routine revisions of each section on the four-year rotating plan. And again, I know that Ms. Bryant would have liked to have talked us through all of these pages, but given her voice condition, she asked me to take this. There is really, I believe, only one item that is in any way different from the initial first reading, and you commented on that at the time. But if I can find it real quickly here, I will help you see exactly what we did. It's the item about reimbursement for travel. Let me see if I can find that thing. I had it this afternoon, but now it escapes me.
It's R 6150.
6150?
It's the regulation.
On the regulation. Thank you. So, that's Regulation 6150. In that second paragraph talking about staff travel, the current language in our policy manual talks about reimbursement at the rate of 40 cents per mile. The initial first draft of the changes put a new dollar figure in there that was the now-current IRS-approved rate, something around 56.5 cents per mile. But the committee thought it might be even more appropriate to change the language to simply say, as you see now highlighted in yellow, "at the rate as currently allowed by the IRS." So, this would be a floating rate that just goes right with whatever the IRS approves each year. They do tend to change that on an annual basis, and this way, we would not have to necessarily change our policy every year just to keep up with them. So, are there any questions or comments before we put this in motion form? All right, then, the approval of all these changes for Section 6000 is an action item. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the proposed policy revisions.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Hall with a second from Dr. Campbell to approve the proposed policy revisions of Section 6000. Any discussion? Then, let's go ahead and vote.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes. Thank you all for that. All right, now, let's see where that puts us. By golly, I think that gets us all the way down to our comments. Am I overlooking something here?
Yes.
Before 8:30? Okay. Well, then, we'll start with Mr. Spencer. Mr. Spencer?
I don't have any comments. I never do.
Well, we certainly will always give you that opportunity. We will turn to our superintendent, Dr. Newsom.
Okay, thank you. My comments are connected, first of all, to the transition team again, and we believe that the public would be very interested in the transition plan and the comments. So, therefore, we will distribute it to staff tomorrow. Tomorrow, the staff will get a chance to look at the plan, look at the details, and then sometime next week, we would likely upload it for the public. So, I'd like the public to be able to look at it, knowing that it's part of our strategy to develop our Blueprint for Excellence. Secondly, I'd like to make a comment about the principal, Ms. Lassiter, who had a chance to go up to Washington, received the recognition for National Blue Ribbon School. And if you would notice any pictures, they have the flag now, and the flag is for that designation is posted, and the students in that school have great pride. So, I'm very happy that the students have so much pride in their school, and I'm sure that we can expect great things from the students at Forest Hills Elementary.
Very good. Will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bryant?
I'm lucky I can't talk.
Dr. Campbell?
I want to thank Dr. Newsom again for the transition team and all that we heard tonight. Of course, to see Mr. King and Dr. Evans, who I went to school with, it's so wonderful to see it all come together. I want to also thank George Washington High School Football Team, who did an outstanding job this year. Of course, we really wanted them to go further than in the playoffs, but we look forward to next year. And last but not least, to my colleagues, I hope that you all will have a wonderful Christmas experience. And to all of the staff, let's not forget the reason of the season. Reason is that it's a giving time, not so much a receiving time, and we look forward to 2014. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to echo Dr. Campbell's comments and thank you, Dr. Newsom, for asking this transition team to take a look at our division and for their efforts. This is just invaluable information, and I think it will prove to be very helpful to the division. And I, too, want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and to my colleagues especially. Thank you.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes, I also echo my colleagues' sentiments. Thanks to the transition team, Dr. Newsom, for pulling them together. It's nice to have a different set of eyes looking at a situation. Sometimes we get so close and focused and used to looking at things that it takes someone else coming in and look at it, too. So, we appreciate that. As many of you may know, I am a board member for the Danville Cancer Association, and I'd like to take this time to thank several of our schools for the wonderful contributions they made to the Danville Cancer Association, for their fundraisers that they did during the month of October. OT Bonner Middle School, OT Bonner School gave $358. Woodbury gave $151, and Westwood donated $1,177 to the Danville Cancer Association, and we want to thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes. I would like to concur in what's been said, and I'm hoping that everyone has had a very thankful Thanksgiving, and another great season has arrived, and you will have a very appreciative spirit of the season. And what has been done here this evening and leading up to this evening, referring to the transitional team, I'm sure everyone was looking forward to that, and we like what we heard, and we can anticipate some great things as a result. And thank everyone who's been contributing to what has happened, and I'm sure you'll be continuing. We thank you for that also.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes. Agree with everything that's been said. I have been wearing proudly my Blue Ribbon pin in Williamsburg and other places that I go. It was a beautiful pin that they gave us, and just really proud of Forest Hills. Also, this morning at Rotary, Dr. Newsom and I heard about what a wonderful job GW's band did, as they always do. My son played in that band, and Mr. Purvis continues to just do a great job. Dr. Osborne, I'm not surprised at all to hear that you are a tough negotiator with our lease. I appreciate that. You're always careful with our dollars, and we appreciate that tremendously. And last but not least, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday, but I can't end my comments without saying how sad we all are by the passing of Dr. Huckabee. I sang in the choir with Dr. Huckabee and worked with him for eight years on this board, and he was a wonderful, wonderful member of this board, and it is a great loss to our community. He will be missed. Thank you.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes, I also want to comment just briefly on the passing of Malcolm Huckabee. Not only was he our colleague on this board for eight years, I also came to see him as a close personal friend. And so, it has been a loss, not just to the community, but to hundreds of folks who, like me, have found some strength and wisdom in Malcolm's efforts around this town, and we will all miss him greatly. To his wife, Lynn, and the children and grandchildren, we offer our condolences. And on a positive note, I want to say that I've been out doing some just random, uninvited, unannounced walk-throughs in the schools, and I have seen good things happening everywhere I have gone. And the noise level has been less than I would have expected in some of these places, and I'm just so proud of our students, our teachers, paraprofessionals, the front office staff, everybody in Danville Public Schools, from what I can see in my walk-throughs, is on task and smiling and happy. Doesn't mean there are always a few issues bubbling under the surface, but just at ground level, watching the day-to-day operations on a normal day, I am pleased with what I've seen, and I'm proud to be associated with Danville Public Schools. Also, I want to thank the transition team, Dr. Lyle Evans in particular. They have given us many recommendations that we will give careful attention to as we move toward the upcoming long-range planning. So, I believe that would do it. Ms. Bolton, you got a motion for us?
I move this meeting of the school board of the City of Danville, Virginia, be recessed for seven minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That was Ms. Bolton and Ms. Hall to take a recess for seven minutes before we go into closed session. Any discussion? Then, please call the roll.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Reverend Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Dr. Paul Hamus?
Yes. All right, settle your votes.